That one did.
This is the police. This is the speaker.
Really, did I just call the police?
Well, that's what it's for.
If the police come in, it was my fault. Still getting trained on what button calls the police. The, I should not be allowed to have that. Good afternoon. I think it's time to call this to order. And with that, I am Russ Winham and I will turn it over to our clerk to do a roll call.
Chair Winham.
Here.
Vice Chair Willem.
Here.
Commissioner Balkovac.
Here.
Commissioner Godert, absent. Commissioner Minor, absent. Commissioner Nance.
Here.
Commissioner Ryan.
Here.
Thank you.
Thank you, and I'll open by just reminding anyone in the audience that wishes to address the commission on an item on the agenda or a non-agendized item during that period of time. There are blue speaker cards in the back. Feel free to complete one as best you can. Hand it to one of these clerks up front here and then they will slip them to me when the time comes so that we can call you and have you come to the lectern for addressing the commission. The next item on the agenda is approval of minutes and we have two sets of minutes to consider. I'd like to break it into two separate pieces. The first one would be May 13, 2025, and I'm doing that because there are different groups of people that may participate in the vote. So, May 13, 2025, looks like everybody is here and Luke Minor or Michelle is gone. So, I will just say, let's look at the first set, which was May 13, 2025. Is there any discussion or emotion?
Mr. Chairman, I'll move approval of the minutes, May 13th.
I'll second.
Is there any further discussion or comments? Seeing none, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Very good, thank you. And then what I would like to do, assuming it's within my appropriate authority, would be to request that the next item be moved to the next agenda because if we don't do that, we will only have three commissioners that participated that will be here. So hopefully next time, for the minutes that are on June 10, we will have four commissioners and have an appropriate majority. So is that all right? We'll go with a concurrence. I'm sure that's a concurrence item, right?
Yes.
I'm not sure, but I'm making that statement.
It would be. I mean, this is not like an action in the sense that you're taking action on a project. So you're just continuing.
Thank you very much. And before I go any further, I should actually turn to you because we forget this oftentimes. Would staff introduce yourself so that we, for the audience knows who's here? Thank you.
I'm Gretchen Storey. I'm Assistant City Attorney.
Thank you.
Josh Anthony, Assistant Public Works Director.
Jeremy Pagan, Director of Development Services.
Lily Toy, Planning Manager, Plan Division.
Very good.
And we have our Senior Planner, David Schlegel, in the audience, who will be presenting on an item later today.
Thank you, and the two people that really run the show down here.
Jennifer Gannon, Meeting Clerk.
Elizabeth Duckman, Administrative Assistant.
Thank you very much. So, are there any announcements that need to be made at this time? Item number three.
None from staff at this time. Chair.
Okay, moving on to item number four. Planning Commission items. The first one is the consent calendar. We don't have consent items, so we'll move on to item 4B. Public hearing's in fact 4B1. Use permit application UP 2023-01684. Casa Park Homes to expand a mobile home park. And I see Ms. Toy moving up to the lectern. And what I will do before we do that is disclose that, I don't even know if it's the same owners at this point, but more than 10 years ago, I did some consulting work for a mobile home expansion at this exact same physical location and have done consulting work for both adjacent developments that are either impacted or involved. But that was a long, long time ago and certainly haven't been involved in anything a long time, so I will remain in my chair. With that, I will turn it over to Ms. Toy.
Thank you very much, Chair. Good afternoon, Commissioners. This item before you is a use permit for an expansion of an existing mobile home park. Before I go into the project itself, I just want to say, I don't give any credit to myself for processing this permit to get it to here. It was our Assistant Planner, Drew Morgan, that worked on this. We let him go on vacation, so I decided to step up and kind of take the limelight, but I'm giving him credit for all the work. So with that, this site is at 11037 Erickson Way. It is located just southeast of the intersection of Lake and 273 Market Street, and it's off of a small street just on the south side of Lake called Erickson Way. Existing zoning is RM9, which is residential multiple-family, nine units per acre, and it is general planned residential, six to 10 units per acre. So, existing, the site contains 16 and a half acres. Five and a half of it is developed with mobile home. Existing 47 units currently, this was granted back in the 80s in the county, and so when it was annexed, it's remained as is pretty much since then. About 15 years ago, new owner took over. He's been making some improvements to the site, repaving the driveways, things like that, and as tenants have vacated, he's replaced the older units with newer units. And so today, what's before you is an expansion of an area to the northwest where they are proposing to expand the facility by 24 units. So, blue arrow shows the access point to the facility off Erickson Way, and this highlighted yellow area is the area of additional units we'll consume. Looking at the site plan, we have 24 units highlighted in yellow. They're proposing a community area, which is required by code for multiple-family type developments, and there will be additional guest parking put in as part of this development, which is required under our off-street parking standards, and also RV parking area to the very northwest side of this additional area. What was, came to light is that, under our general plan policies, if we were to expand any type of multiple-family beyond 50 units, fire was concerned about an emergency access to this development, and what is being required is an emergency access road to the, to the west. And the parcel that you see that's highlighted where this access road will connect to is owned by Hilltop Springs, a residential living facility just located to the west, and it, the access road will be paved according to fire standards, all-weather surface, which will connect to the Woodcliff Drive. And that is conditioned as part of the permit, as draft condition. The easement will be required to be obtained before building permit or any grading permit is issued. The proposed density for this with the 24 additional units is 7.6 units, so it's consistent with the six to 10 units per acre of the general plan site. The site does have some slopes constraint, but that's not the part, area that they are developing. They're adding amenities, as I have pointed out, and so in conclusion, the proposal does, is in character with the community and respecting neighborhood and in character with promoting compatibility. With regards to SEQA, we did have a ballot biological report done. There's no special status plans identified. There's the conditions required for migratory birds, which is state federal guidelines, and so hence, there is a buffer around any nest or maternity colony required during in-season, and it does fulfill the criteria for infill development under SEQA, under 15332. So you'll find in your packet, the findings are required for those, the infill development criteria. So it's consistent with the city's general plan, goals and policies, and hence, we recommend that the planning commission make the findings and approve the project subject to the conditions of approval presented to you. I am available to answer any questions at this time.
Thank you, Ms. Toy. Questions or initial comments from Commissioners?
Can you, you kind of said, you skipped over it. I just want to hear, you, the new owners owned the property for 15 years?
That's correct.
Because when I went through there, it, I think I counted three that looked updated in the current park.
And that, that may be the case.
It just seems like more than three people in 15 years would have moved out of the park if he was updating those mobile homes.
Yeah, I'm not, you know, I did, we don't control any of that. However, I do want to state that what I didn't go over and was probably in your staff report is that HCD, the State Housing and Community Development, is charged with the operation of it.
Yeah, of overlooking it.
And so, yeah, they, they go through the state for everything other than the land use entitlement.
Right. That was just a comment that I observed when I went out there. And have they talked to the adjacent property owner, the Springs? And what's the likelihood that they would give access?
Yes, they have, and we've gotten an email from Hilltop Springs owners and saying that they are open to offering easement to them.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions of staff before we go to public hearing? Okay, thank you. What we will do next is open the public hearing. Again, at this point, I have one blue speaker card. If someone else wishes to speak, we would ask you to complete a card and bring it up here to one of the clerks. And so with the public hearing open, I will call upon Linda Cheatham to come up to either one of the lecterns, whatever you're most comfortable with, and address the commission, and you will be given three minutes to make your comments.
Good evening. I don't have a lot of questions because I live in the Woodcliff Estates area and not in the mobile home park.
I'm sorry, excuse me. Do me a favor, get a little closer to the microphone. Thank you so much.
Is that better? That's better. Okay, thank you.
My little disclaimer about the hearings going. Thank you.
Okay, so I live like right behind the mobile home park, just on Woodcliff. So, my, one of, one of my concerns is that, are you going to be opening up the end of Woodcliff for traffic to come down there out of the mobile home park? Because we were promised that that was going to be opened years ago and it's still closed off, so we don't have anything but through Pepper Tree if we have an emergency in our neighborhood. So that's one of my questions. And I think I know now where they're going to be putting the new lots because that wasn't in the pamphlet. So, do you discuss that now or do you do that later? The egress.
Yeah, what I'd like to do is get comments from public, and then I'm confident that we're going to be able to turn to staff and have them answer that question. I wrote it down, and then if there's any other further clarifications needed, they will call you up. Is that all right with you?
Thank you.
Very good. Thank you very much. The, the next card that I have is from Noah Starkson. So Noah.
Hello, my name's Noah Starkson. I live on Woodcliff Drive, which is just south of this, and our properties border on some of this, and I wanted to draw attention to some concerns I have, and I think discrepancies, because with what I just heard, 24 units being proposed, all of which on the northwest side, but this plan shows our highlighted 20, but we didn't talk at all about the four units on the south side, which would be directly adjacent to the properties of me and my neighbors. That was a little concerning to not hear that addressed at all in this. That's where there's a large hill and grading needing to be done. On this picture here, you see the line at the bottom is the property line, so they will have to put a pretty steep embankment or retaining wall right up against property line and fences. With that, I mean, there comes some obvious concerns. I bought the house about, about four years ago, knowing we have this beautiful open space right behind us. Now seeing some development added, even if it's in that area, puts it right up against is a little concerning, especially for our property values in the future. The, one of the other concerns in the environmental impact or the, I forgot what it was called, but as they looked at bats specifically, it located like these three spots is where we decided to, is where we were looking for bats, everything. None of them were on the south side. They were all on the north side. And I know for me personally, I can go out on my deck any night and hear and see bats any night I go out there. So it felt like this plan may have been done. Or the responses and how the city is looking at planning for this doesn't reflect that southern portion that was in the plans that we see here. I'm not sure why it's not highlighted, but even if, as I looked in, as I counted, as we're talking here, that's 20 up top, not the 24 that's being proposed here. Make sure I hit everything. Oh, and then I have some, the other concerns are just around the oak trees especially. And again, I'm not, my concerns are not on the northern addition up there. It's all this southern section in those, it's only four units being added, but the oak trees, they're going to have to get taken down there as well as a number of oak trees right up against that if we're putting a retaining wall or a big embankment, that's going to affect those oak trees in a lot of ways, and so that was my other concern. Thank you.
Yeah, thank, thank you very much. Sorry about that. I always have to make notes or else it goes away. So with that, I will, seeing no other speaker cards, I'll close the public hearing, bring it back for Commissioners to ask questions of staff and, and get clarifications first. I'll go ahead and hit the things that I wrote down that I heard, and the first one was opening or vehicular access Woodcliff to the south. Staff, are you able to bring up a, go back to one of the previous exhibits and address that question? So I, I know you guys are analyzing, but I think simply put, the question is, was there consideration for requiring or providing access to Woodcliff to the south?
Does everybody know what spot we're looking at? Okay. Two roads come together, the current future, or current Woodcliff. Call it, call it a knuckle in the transportation world. So the Springs facility is a multi-phased, was a multi-phase project or is, that still hasn't built their second phase. As part of that, they have to construct their sewer line that goes down Woodcliff and then connects to the sewer that is in current Woodcliff Drive, part of the Pepper Tree subdivision. When doing that, they were not conditioned to build the road. However, the city has, we have put street stallers to a project that is currently in the early design phases, so the city will actually construct that road when the developer builds the sewer line. Current timeframe is not, we don't, you know, it's under development, but figure the next couple of years, we should have that project delivered.
So, so to clarify, the, what we see is part of a road easterly of the Springs.
Correct.
Would be extended southerly to tie into Woodcliff.
Correct, and the city has already obtained the necessary right of way in that area.
Okay. Anyone have any further questions on that item? So not a requirement of this development, but the city's working on a project to do so.
Yes.
Thank you.
And the access road would stay because you still need it. It doesn't connect to, that's how you connect to Woodcliff.
Correct.
Okay.
Correct.
Very good, thank you. And then the next one was addressing, I, I think to break it up into separate questions, the number of units and are there, did you inadvertently omit the discussion of the four proposed units along the southerly side of the development?
I did inadvertently, and let me point to you up here where those units will be. I did inadvertently, and let me point to you up here where those units will be. Right here.
Yes, thank you. Okay, so I think that there's concurrence with the commenter that, that there was a, that there was a whoops there by staff and that, that there are four more units than what was in the original presentation. And then there was a comment about being able to hear bats and was that considered? And I'm just wondering if that is addressed in that there are standard conditions of approval, in all likelihood, coming, that'll say you can only remove trees in the non-maternal, et cetera, season. I won't get my terms right. And if you don't do that, you have to send a biologist out there and verify that there are not any nesting bats before you remove oaks.
That's great. That's all federally protected, and so it, it is a standard condition. So if it's during bat nesting season, obviously, you know, they, they, they need to do surveys and things like that. And if they are found, then they've got to follow protocol as to when they can construct and how they, you know, maybe the bats and birds need to fledge before construction starts.
Yeah. And as I recall, if it's before fledging, there are ways to scare them away. Let them nest somewhere else, but once they've truly nested, then you work around them.
That's correct.
And you delay your construction or set buffer zones or things like that. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay. So are there any other questions from commissioners about the bat question or comment from public? Okay, seeing none. And then oak tree removal along that same side, which, what I, what I will comment on is I don't see, and maybe it exists somewhere else, a preliminary landscaping plan. Will, will there be, I guess my question is, will there be some tree planting required along that side? Because the commenter talked about an embankment or a retaining wall. The preliminary design clearly shows an embankment. If, if in my bifocals, I counted contours, maybe that's six feet vertically. And there'll be an embankment, and will there have to be some tree planting along that side to offset the removal? Or is that not included?
I am looking on page packet, page 35.
I'm sorry, you say 35?
Three, 35.
Thank you.
And if we're looking at what they're calling the C2.1, I am looking at the architectural plan area two at the very bottom. And proposed, you can see the depth of that grading is about 40 feet from the existing park road at the deepest and down to 33, farthest to the east. And I see proposed 15-gallon trees in the front of the units, but none are proposed on the back, probably because it's too steep. Typically, it's not recommended to plant trees in steep slopes.
I see what you're getting at. There's a, it might be circle note number nine, typically pointing to four trees along the front of the units. And then would it be accurate to say, I'm not, of course, we might have to cross-reference to the tree survey, but it's only showing one tree over, existing tree over there in the corner. And the aerial suggests there's more trees. So, so the mapping here does not show the trees that are getting removed. Is that, just for accuracy, I'm not offering commentary yet.
Yeah, from what I could tell, it looks like three to four existing trees that will be removed.
Yeah. Okay, I'm seeing the same thing. Okay, so at, at least I think it's clarified what's proposed at this point, what's in, what's out. Are there any further comments that'll clarify that before we go into further commission comments? Okay, with that, I'll turn to commissioners. Thank you to the staff there. Any questions of staff or comments amongst ourselves? Please go ahead, Commissioner.
Mine are just comments. So I know that in reading, MPA is responsible for mobile homes parks, but other cities have taken that over. Has that ever been a consideration for you guys?
Not that I'm aware of.
I just, because I'm not sure how much MPA really comes and does their job, where I feel like the city taking ownership of that would do a better job. So that's comment one. And then I would just like to suggest for condition 18, where the common area, that they do something more than just a fire pit. That they could really use some sprucing up to that mobile home park. So I would like to see something more extensive than some of the suggested items. Those are my comments.
I'd like to add to that. I visited the park the other day, and I would concur that it, it needs some upgrading. And if they're going to expand into a recreation area, that it needs to be more specific than, than what we've got in front of us today. Yeah, that's on condition 18, yes.
Commissioner Nance, Commissioner Ryan?
I had the same idea.
Okay.
You did so. Hit mine.
Yeah, same. Just a question on the four houses, or the proposed sites, excuse me, on the south side. The 15-foot setback, I'm reading on that packet, page 35. Is that setback, is that for these new pads? Or is that for the, the homes off of Woodcliff? Like, what is that setback?
That is a required minimum setback that they're showing.
Right, so?
Yep. And they are setting it back, looks like almost twice as far.
Okay, gotcha. And then with these proposed sites on the south side, are there, are they going to have to do, they're going to have to dig plumbing, gas, right?
Yes, all permanent utilities.
And where does that tie into? Is it part, is it on the street? Is it in the Mobile Home Park? Or where does that, like, where's all that trenching going to happen? Is it?
That's not being provided in the details here, but logic has it that they're going to extend it through the existing park road on the north side.
They'll just tie into that?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah. Okay. And then the, the other question is that pond on the east side? I, I read the environmental report, and it was mentioned that they, I think Mallards, like, were resting in there, but there wasn't a lot of, I mean, the environmental impact report, you have a pond right there, and there was, they didn't really talk about that.
Right, Ericson Pond, yes.
Yeah. So just any, I'm just curious why envi- the environmental impact report was just for this site, but then you have a water, you have a water source there. They didn't really even talk about how that was going to be impacted, so.
Right. It's on a separate piece of property, not even owned by the property owner.
I understand that, 100%. It's just.
They, they cannot impact it.
They can't, they can't inspect it, they can't comment on it.
Right. Any stormwater has to stay on their site.
Yeah.
It cannot drain into that pond.
Is that recreational, or like, who owns that, that water?
It's private property. Yeah, it's, it's been there for a long, long time.
I'm sure it has, yeah. Okay. And then this road that has, this, um, what do we call it? The road that's going to be, that's going to hit the Woodcliff easement? Is that what we're calling it?
Emergency access road.
Emergency access road, yeah. So that's just going to be just a paved road? Is there going to be a gate that controls that? Or are residents going to be able to use that to go in and out, or?
No, it's only for emergency purposes only. So it's, uh, they call it a Knox box, where emergency vehicles have access with a remote, and they can open that gate.
Gotcha. Okay. Okay, that's, that's all my questions. Thank you.
Okay, anything else before we circle back to, I think we had two comments that were specific to considering maybe a condition modification? Yeah, but I would, I think it'd be appropriate to say, or any, any feedback on that from staff? Because staff worked with the applicant for quite some time to get to this point.
Yes, I just want to, I'm looking at condition 18 right now. It's very open-ended. It's not, it's not requiring them to do anything one particular, but it looks like we could probably ask for something more finite. It says this area could include children's play area, swimming pool, and/or community room, barbecue area with shade elements, turf play areas, or similar improvements. Final plans to be reviewed and approved. But it's at the developer's final choice, it says.
Yeah, my preference, just as one person, would be hearing comments from commissioners, would be for staff to propose perhaps a way to modify that condition. It's a little better than us trying to do it from our, from our rockers to, to give it a little more specificity. That will result in a little, you know, a little higher likelihood of some quality.
Well, you know, this is just from my experience. We've approved some multiple-family developments in, you know, the recent past. They've done things like a half-basketball court and a small community room. That is, I'm, I'm thinking of Altars Crossing, which is the one over on Browning. K2 built that. And, but I don't know if we want to go to that extent here. I, I would recommend shade element because people want to go outside, barbecue, or a, you know, a play area, something like that to that extent. All they're showing right now on the plan is a patio, a concrete patio.
Yes, please, Commissioner.
Exactly. That was my concern, is it's all the way in the front of the, the project, and it's tiny. I know when we did Linden Apartments, they did a playground in the center of it. And it just, I worry that that's going to be just an awning and maybe a barbecue for everyone to use there. And I would like to see something more than that. So your suggestion, I, I don't mind the shade, but if we could add like then turf, so there's a turf area there. But going back to the drawings, it, it doesn't look like it's going to be much more than a little awning of shade.
Yeah, we'll get a set of final plans.
We won't, we won't look at building plans for this project. That'll happen through HCD. But Public Works, we'll be looking at a set of grading plans, right? A final set of grading plans, which will incorporate this element. So the condition as written is pretty open-ended, which would allow us at the staff level to approve. But if this body wants something more specific, I would suggest that condition 18, we'd have to take away some of that open-endedness so that upon plan review, when we review the final set of plans, we have something to judge it against, yeah?
Condition 18 ends with the owner's discretion. So I would like to at least throw that back to a city's discretion?
Are you saying the last, the developer's final choice and plans for common shall be provided with final plan review?
Yes. But that, does that still give you?
It doesn't mean we have to accept it at plan review.
Okay. It gives you a chance to?
Yeah, but it, it does help staff. You know, Lily can correct me if I'm wrong, but I mean, generally, the more open-ended a condition is, the, the more flexibility we have during final plan review. But also, that can be good and bad, right?
Right.
So if this body wants something a little more ironclad, and that condition to be a little more objective and straightforward, that would help us at plan review.
Well, my suggestion is taking off the barbecue part, that, that it needs to be something more than just a community grill there. That's my suggestion.
So I think perhaps I suggest the second to last sentence to replace it with. Instead of saying this may include, we should say this should minimally, shall minimally include a turf area, shade element, and a barbecue area.
I would love that. I'm not saying we should demand that of the developer. I'm more just wanting to remove the, that they could, barbecue area stands by itself, and then it says and shade. So if we could just get rid of the, the barbecue line that says barbecue area, just take that out, I'd be happy.
If I'm understanding you, Commissioner, it's because you're reading this and/or
Right.
a community room and/or a barbecue area with a shade element. That's how you're reading. Grammar's, grammar's tricky, as we argue over commas or not.
Then at the very end, it also says or similar improvements.
Yes.
Just give me a minute. I'm, I'm looking at the code section in particular as we reference zoning code. Let's see here, 183130C. Lily, do you know if that's, is it, is this specifically codified? Or what does this body have the purview to change?
It is. It is codified.
183130?
C.
Just give us a second. I don't know why we were.
Interesting, cross-checking with the.
So I'm just grabbing our zoning code here. Says common outdoor activity areas typically consist of landscape areas, walks, patios, swimming pools, barbecue areas, shade elements, playgrounds, turf, or other such improvements as are appropriate to enhance the outdoor environment of the development. So that's, that's what our code says. The condition doesn't read exactly in that manner, but it does offer some flexibility and mention some of those elements. So I would say it's the purview of this body to, if we want to make that condition more objective and clear, and perhaps narrower in scope, that would be your prerogative.
How much area is this? No, I, I can see it on the thing, but it, what is that? How much space is that?
The code, code requires a minimum of 80 square feet. So it's at minimum that, but likely, I don't have a scale with me, but it's probably a little bit bigger.
It's half, half the size of a single-wide mobile.
Yeah, so no swimming pool, no, uh?
Yeah.
Yeah, it's keynote, is it keynote eight? Is that right?
Yes.
So. So, not to mention, but I suppose this body can assume it's at minimum what the code requires, 80 square feet, which isn't a whole lot.
So, so I did hear Commissioner Willem say that perhaps she might make a motion that just strikes barbecue area, which wouldn't prevent that from being included.
No, not at all.
But it prevents it
From being just a barbecue.
As our grammarian in the group from saying, no, it's just a barbecue area. And I say that tongue-in-cheek because I'm, now you're over my head on.
Yeah. No, I, I would be, I would like to make a motion just to remove the barbecue portion.
When, yeah, okay, when we're ready. Okay.
Yeah.
So I, I, I think we're probably there.
Let's have a couple.
Commissioner Nance?
Yes. Question. So the RV parking, the five spaces, I think it's number five in this? Five, so the recreational, parking for recreational vehicles, that's just unattended, un, people just park their RVs there. They're not, the, the owner's not renting out those spaces. There's not hookups there?
Yes, it's only for parking. They don't have.
Storage, and that's regulated and?
That's correct.
All that.
Not rented to you and I, if we have an RV and know where to park it.
Yeah. And then it, it, just sort of opinion from staff. So those, just kind of going back to those four spaces on the south side, just really been, you know, when I first looked at this, when I got the packet, it just, it seems just really tight in there. And I, I did, you know, consider looking at the contour lines and all of that. And I don't know, that just, like, in your opinion, because there's a lot of grading that's going to have to happen right on these people's property line. And you're kind of just, they're kind of just stacking them in there. On the north side, seems like open space, and they can do what they're asking to do. But to squeeze in these four spaces here, that just seems really tight overall. So what, you know, you're in the business of, you know, looking at grading and moving earth and all that. Do you think it's even doable? I mean, it's tight. It is right there on the line.
Yeah, well, they would, you know, certainly the codes all and standards will all apply, right? So they'll have to meet our grading ordinance and do it properly. They'll have to meet our SEFAX, as Ms. Toy described. As Ms. Toy described, they're meeting a general plan conformance and density. So we're not allowing these units to exceed max density for this zoning district, right? So, you know, yes, it, it can be done, you know, the engineer can, it, but it has, they will have to follow the codes and standards per what I just outlined. So we're not allowing, as far as I'm aware, any kind of variance to our codes, any sort of narrower setbacks, any sort of exceptions. They'll have to meet the, the same development standards anyone else would in the city. So if the property can fit it and they can meet all of our codes and standards, then, you know, we'd have, this body would have to make a finding that would, that allow us to deny those four units. And I'm not, I'm not sure where that finding would come from here off the top of my head. Just some initial thoughts in response to your, your question, Commissioner Nance. But when we do get final improvement plans, the Public Works team will review and make sure that the grading is to standard and meets codes and regulations and will plan check at two setbacks and the like. So it'll meet all pertinent development regulations.
Okay, thank you.
With that, I'd, I'd like to make one comment and then I was going to call for a motion. And my comment is the thing that came through for me on this project is, you know, east coast development in the U.S., we had tiny homes and they meant a lot of different things. A lot of them were ADUs, a lot of them were converted basements, there were garages and backyards. We developed in California and we did away with all that, with our, our, our big, bigger, 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 our different zoning theories. Yet we filled the niche of providing what I would call old school tiny homes by having mobile home parks and trailer parks. And over several decades ago, that fell out of favor for a lot of good reasons. But I would contend for a lot of reasons that are not good for our society. And so for years, my personal opinion is, as we've been branding, not, you don't hear as much about it now, but we did a few years ago, this, this tiny home is a new thing. And I would look at everybody and say, no, it isn't, that's a trailer park. And a trailer park is a wonderful niche housing solution. Comes with some challenges, especially for fire and law enforcement and social services. I'm not discounting that. But we need more options for housing that are affordable. And again, full disclosure, I put my way through college, living in a trailer park. My first home out of, out of college was a single wide mobile home because it was affordable for me and my family. It was a beautiful way to live. So I'm all in favor of it, quite frankly. And with that said, I'm hoping Commissioner Willem is ready to offer a motion that supports staff recommendation with striking two words out of condition eighteen, if that's what you said.
So I'll make a motion to approve use permit application UP twenty twenty-three zero one six eight four by Casa Park Homes to expand existing forty-seven unit, unit mobile home park by twenty-four units on property located at one one zero three seven Erickson Way in an R M residential multiple family, nine unit per acre district with the condition eighteen changed to remove barbecue.
And is there a second?
I'll second the motion.
We have a second. Any discussion or comments from staff before?
Just to clarify, that's just removing the, the word barbecue or barbecue area with shade elements or, or just to be specific?
Just barbecue area. I would love the shade element, but barbecue area.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions or comments before I call for a vote? All in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries, thank you. Thank you for, everybody for your patience on that one as we worked through that item. The next item on the agenda, and I will do the blue card reminder for anybody that may wish to speak on the next item. And the next item is four B two. Coming back again, standard conditions of approval for the city writing. And I believe we have Mr. Schlegel working his way up to the lecturn and I will turn it over to you, sir.
All right, thank you Chair, Commissioners, members of the public. My name's David Schlegel, Senior Planner for the Planning Division and bringing back to you today the standard subdivision, conditions of approval update. After getting direction to bring it back to local developers for workshop and some revisions. Just to reiterate, these are standard conditions that apply to all subdivisions in the city. Just to make sure that they're meeting city standards, they're current with our general plan policies, current with state laws, federal laws and the, and the like, which pertain to the development subdivision. And a little bit more background on that, you know, we could simply cite our code, cite all the laws and, and have some developer or somebody who may not develop that often go searching for that. But back in twenty-ten or even prior, the development community was finding that not to be ideal. And so the effort was made to create these standard conditions in one place. And it's not going to maybe encompass everything that a subdivision might have to deal with for development. But the idea is that we're providing more streamlining and efficiency by keeping these all in one place, making sure developers are aware of what's, what they're signing up for before they get their project entitled. And over, as time passes, there's reasons to update these standards. And as I talked about last time, this commission has the authority to make modifications under the subdivision ordinance. And some of those reasons are listed here. We have new adopted standards by the city since twenty-ten, changes to city ordinances, changes to state law policies over time, the recently updated general plan, twenty forty-five E I R, and all the policies in that general plan and mitigation measures in the E I R. And one thing that probably didn't mention last time, but we were, have been made aware since adopting our general plan, E I R, is an option for SEQA streamlining with an exemption under section one five one eight three, which actually mandates that projects that are consistent with city general plan densities be looked at for this exemption essentially. And there's recent case law that directs cities and jurisdictions to do just that. Making sure that if you have a newly adopted general plan E I R and the project's consistent, meets other qualifying factors, streamlining the project through not, basically not doing the environmental review a second time. Making sure that there's no project specific effects which are peculiar to the project site or the project itself in doing so. Another criteria with using this streamlining exemption is making sure that environmental effects are limited to those that are identified in the initial study or other analysis. So every project that you're going to see come forward as a subdivision is going to have some type of an initial study or, or other analysis, whether it be there's something peculiar and we can't exempt it or whether we're staff saying, we think we can support the exemption because it's consistent with the general plan E I R and things like that. So I just wanted to point this process out. And one other key component of this is the general plan, E I R mitigation measures, which we're recommending be incorporated into standard conditions. And then that, if there's anything that can't be substantially mitigated through the general plan E I R, they'd be mitigated through uniformly applied development policies or standards. And that's obviously the more standard things you already see in our codes that, that do just that. And the general plan, E I R talks about those things in its analysis for the, for the overall general plan for the city. And some of those things find their way before you today as these standard conditions are being amended for amendment as policies and mitigation measures surrounding these topics here. Talked on, on this last time. And I kind of want to go fast here because we already talked about some of these changes. If you want to stop me, slow me down, please do. But yeah, just talking about conditions that have been incorporated new and added on to the previous standard conditions that we had adopted in relation to our general plan update. There's wildfire, air quality standard mitigation measures, biological resource impacts that the general plan E I R discusses, that we want to make more standard. We've been applying them to projects in standard practice, but we figure we can find a way to make them actually standard. And cultural and geologic resources, some laws have changed over time and, and I'll touch on that in a little bit here. So what we did is with your recommendations, we went back to local developers and consultants with what we had drafted up and got a lot of good positive feedback. Sorry, going through hazard, hazard mater, hazardous materials and noise as well, let's not discount those. And we had some recommendations and, and it was very productive and we, very, very glad we had this opportunity to do that. One of the first changes you see in the packet is condition number nine, representing previously condition number nine and thirteen, we're recommending they be incorporated as one. Basically, there's a lot of redundancy between the two. And this makes it address all the concerns with essentially developing the site without fully having approved plans or an entitled project, for, for example. We did get a recommendation to change some language just before this meeting. And you see that under the text there that says condition number nine and number thirteen were combined. So we are recommending a change here, for the record, that the language where it says the developer must secure approval of subdivision improvement plans, add partial or full before that. The recommendation was that it be the appropriate improvement plans and strike subdivision from the record. However, working with Department of Public Works, that didn't make sense for us. So this is being recommended to you as a minor change to improve this condition number nine. Condition fifteen was amended for clarity. This deals with drainage infrastructure and a lot of different rules and regulations involving that, but particularly City Council Policy eighteen oh six. We wanted to make sure it was clear how that policy was going to be applied to subdivisions in a standard way. This is an easy add, very good addition by the consultants to mention that water districts also care about irrigation water when it comes to subdivisions. As far as this public safety fire condition, there's redundancy between twenty-five and twenty-six and we are recommending that they be combined. And working with the fire marshal, did not want to lose the language regarding easements and service on, for on light, on lot hydrants or flag lots. So this is the recommended version. Reducing some conditions is, is, is good and making sure they're not redundant between one another. This was very positive for us. Condition number twenty-one is just adding some flexibility there at the end, just in case there's a scenario where the city's paying for some portion of a project. Making, you know, having the old language didn't quite make sense. There might be some anomalies out there where this condition doesn't actually work. So we added some language for flexibility. And this was reduced, condition number thirty-one was reduced to just essentially remove language that's in the code and the code's referenced there in chapter sixteen twenty. So we just removed a lot of the language that you can just go look up yourself. And that was a good recommendation. Here we have getting into the biological conditions, some good improvements to directly address what we're trying to do for projects that would, would qualify. It's just to simply identify minimization measures that have been identified in a study in relation to the project and incorporating that into the project as a standard practice. We've also wanted to reformat that section because there's a lot of subsections that deals with specific species or features. And in addition to that, referencing aquatic resources appropriately and removing the scenario of a, of a ratio that we assume a resource agency would require of a project and just leaving it up to those resource agencies that have that authority. And I should point out here that the exhibit A is accurate. However, the strike through version in your packet doesn't reflect adequately that we're proposing to strike subsections A through D of former condition number forty-two. And that was because it was getting really into the weeds on what a, a resource agency might require of a project and really just wanted to defer to those agencies and, and making sure it's standard practice that the projects are in consultation with those agencies to do it the right way and get the proper permits. And this last one is, has been reworked. Condition number forty-five now has been split in two, really because as we looked at it, there's different laws that categorize cultural and tribal cultural resources in two different ways. Public Resources Code, section two one oh seven four actually requires that consultation be done if tribal cultural resources identified by a tribe that has cultural affiliation to the site. And so that's also been incorporated into our general plan as a policy. And so we thought, rather than combining the scenario where there could be cultural resources that aren't tribal cultural resources and tribal monitors and things like that, we, we split that off separately. And it doesn't have the full text here, so if you want me to reference that or read that, I can. But ultimately, what the second condition that's recommended here does is identify the proper methods to deal with findings, unexpected, unanticipated findings of a cultural resource separate from an actual human remains of some kind. And so we wanted to make sure that was following step by step what the law says and consistent with our general plan as well. And I think we hopefully have something that you could consider for approval. Just want to point out that what you're doing today in potentially approving standard subdivision conditions is not subject to SEQA, can be seen with certainty that there's no possibility that updating these conditions would have a significant effect on the environment. In addition, any action taken to assure the maintenance and protection of the environment when applied to future projects is exempt from SEQA under section one five three oh eight. And hopefully covered everything, if not, I'm here for questions. At this time, staff's going to recommend that after carrying out a public hearing, this commission approve the proposed standard subdivision conditions of approval update as revised and adopt the planning commission resolution. With that, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Good, thank, thank you very much. I'll go ahead and ask my, my couple of questions first. First thing is I, I try to remember, I have a note, but then I forgot. Just wanted to disclose, I did have conversations very briefly with, with Mr. Schlegel about this a couple of days ago. Very brief conversation in, in preparation for this, as well as a conversation with Mr. Dormer, a consultant with Sheridan Lapsley. But those are the only outside of this setting conversations I had. I did, then the next thing I just wanted to be sure, because we see that in, in the example project we just approved, that the conditions end up getting presented in a different format than, than they're presented to us in that they are a checklist or there's checkboxes. Because that, that makes it easier to digest. As presented originally, I'm going to be the guy that will confess that I said, holy cow, the checkboxes are going away because they weren't presented last time. But now I see that, or I believe that they're actually going to be added. And so there's a whole bunch of things here that will only be applicable if staff determines they're applicable. Is that correct?
Actually, no, for subdivisions, we do not. So if we do bring back updates for use permit standard conditions, we would probably still have checklists in our practice for subdivisions. It's not a checklist, however, I think the language is pretty much as applicable. You know, for instance, if a project has an environmental study that says do X, our standard condition is really just saying that you're going to do that, essentially.
Okay, thank you. And you anticipated, why that makes my head hurt a little bit. And I see that you, you did make some changes there that, that clarifies that it's if something exists, then these things happen, whereas what we saw last time didn't necessarily say that. I think that was the, the intent. So, okay, I'm, I'm going to let that go then and move on to my next item. And that is, just for the benefit of all commissioners and public, what, you said you pulled people together. Who participated in your little ad hoc study group?
Yeah, I mean, we, we didn't have a large workshop. Sheridan Lapsley does a lot of subdivisions around, around here. Josh Johnson was there, got comments from yourself, Bruce Grove. And Josh Miller wasn't able to attend, but he is happy with the changes he, he mentioned to me. So, you know, if, if, if that's not enough, certainly not sure what else we could have done, but, to get people there. But that was very productive for us.
No, I appreciate that. I just think that it's good for everyone to know who, who was or wasn't. I was out of town and I probably caused a few eye rolls. I submitted written comments, but I submitted them in three different formats to make it easy and that probably made it worse. But you guys have been very polite about that, thank you. And then if I understood you correctly, there were two conditions, number nine and number forty-two, that you said, what we have in the package is not what you're proposing today. Is that true?
Nine should be correct. And I'm talking about the strike through version. I just realized before this meeting that it still shows subsections A through D of forty-two as not being struck.
Okay, thank you, because we see it in three different presentations
Right.
in the back. And the strike through version is not the one we should be looking at when we're making a decision on number nine.
The final exhibit A is accurate for what we're recommending.
That, that's, that's good, I'm, I'm going to be okay with that then. And then, but was there? And then, but was there an anomaly in number forty-two?
Well, no. So, yeah, that is the anomaly, is that subsections A through D, and there's this last sentence in there that we referenced those subsections about to be read, recommending striking those. Yeah.
So I think I hear you saying that there are, I'll say anomalies in the strike through version of the packet, but in the final black and white at the end, as we focus on that, it's as staff has recommended.
Correct.
Okay, good. And I said that because sometimes, rightfully so, you'll slip in a revision at the last minute, but you're not doing that.
Well, we are asking for one minor revision to condition number nine. Yeah, sorry.
Okay, then I didn't, I didn't ask my question very well then. So when I get to the black and white number nine, you're actually proposing something different?
Yes. Sorry about that.
And, and so that's probably important since, and we don't have a piece of paper on that, is that correct?
No, I can get you to the slide.
Okay, very, very good. Thank you. You're seeing more and more of my neuroses of how I track things.
Yeah, so just above the cutout for condition number nine, the language reads as we would propose it. So continuing the sentence where it says, prior to the start of any clearing, grading, or any construction activities, the developer must secure approval of partial or full subdivision improvement plans that are consistent with the city's adopted construction standards, grading ordinance, and other applicable regulations for grading. Yeah, we worked with the Department of Public Works to take the recommendation from the consultant to make something that would work for, I think, both parties, so.
So if, I'm not saying this is what's going to happen necessarily, but presupposed commissioners, they haven't spoken yet, but that can be dealt with by approving as presented with the change articulated by you in the presentation for number nine.
Yeah.
Something like that is a way to wrap that up without having to worry about the wording beyond that. Okay. Okay, at least I understand where we are. And that's all that I have at this point. So again, at this asking for clarifications of staff stage before we open the public hearing, anyone else have clarifications? Thank you.
Thank you for the presentation. Much better this time, really easier to read. Can you go back to the CEQA slide for the, at the start of the presentation?
Yeah, reading the section?
So is this, oh, sorry, that one, the CEQA, go forward, right there. Is this consistent with the new law that just took effect July first for CEQA?
You know, actually, I haven't checked to see if this section has any amendments to it, but in reading or the digest of what's coming.
Yeah, well, I know that the infill map isn't going to be produced by the state of California until 2027. So until then, I understand it's the discrepancy of the developer and the city to get to those standards. I was just wondering if there would be guidelines for that until they get that map in place?
I'm sure there will be guidelines. One interesting thing is that the infill exemption that we normally use, I don't see any changes to that. So it's kind of a separate infill section of CEQA. Yeah, I mean, it's interesting.
Yes, well, I just wondered if we-
It's going to apply to very specific areas.
Since we're redoing it, it looks like it's through 2045 if it needed to be addressed. It just seems like a pretty large change. I'm just asking, because that's your expertise, I'm just asking if it would affect that.
I don't know if staff has really any, like, formulated comments on it, other than we've looked at it. And, and I think a lot of the infill policies that are coming are consistent with the general plan.
Okay.
To that extent.
That's good. Any other commissioner about COVID? Oh, go ahead, please.
So what was the, what was the catalyst to even revamp this policy? Because it looks like 2010, like what was the driving force? Who started the conversation? Why are we changing this?
So, yeah.
Like, why did we have? Yeah, why? What's the-
I mean, I would say it started as a recommendation from consultants on helping us complete our general plan EIR. And we were made aware of case law that said we shall actually look at exemptions like this for projects consistent with the general plan EIR. And we realized that we're going to need to update our standards just to reflect policies that have been adopted in that new general plan.
So that opened the books, right?
Yeah.
So the EIR opened the books and then the books are open, like, well, let's change a couple more things.
Yeah, I think, yes, exactly. There's, we started looking at other things that have been changed since that time.
And which consultant was the one that, what was the spark or the driving force? Were they part of the, were they part of the revision of this?
Yeah, we worked with Placeworks out of Sacramento.
Is that a city contracted consultant?
They were contracted to do our general plan environmental impact report. We hired staff to do the work on the general plan itself. We hired a senior planner for a couple of years, and then we contracted out the CEQA portion to Placeworks Engineering.
So the city still pays that consultant?
No, no, that was just as part of the general plan effort.
Right, but I think twice, the answer is yes to his question.
Well, did they get paid? Yes.
Did the city pay, contract for Placeworks to do the work?
Yes.
As opposed to someone else?
Yeah, we contracted with a planning firm, planning consultant, environmental consultant to do CEQA.
Yeah.
And they did the EIR portion of the general plan. And they were paid for that work and that work's now completed. And then-
And then, let me just, so, but part of that, did they, out of that work, did they said, oh, you need to update this, this subdivision plan?
Yeah, Kent Manuel and one of the principals with Placeworks were having a discussion as, as that project came to a close. And he said, hey, you know, now that you have a new general plan EIR, it really makes sense to go back and update your standard subdivision conditions of approval so the two match.
Gotcha.
Yeah.
Okay, great.
So it was a recommendation, sure, from that consultant, but it's also good planning practice. Now we have this nice new, I mean, our, our old general plan is, was twenty to twenty-five years old.
Yeah.
So upon adoption of that document, it made sense to now go back and do some cleanup, and that's what this is.
Okay, great. And just to piggyback on what the chair was asking, like, the participants of this workshop, can you just say it slower? You said Josh Johnson, who was the other ones that were part of this?
I have two folks from Sheridan Lapslayer to McLean, Mike Dormer. We had emails with Bruce Grove and Josh Miller, so.
Okay, about specific parts of this plan?
I'm sorry?
So I'm just, so, I mean, just full transparency, you've got developers saying, hey, the books are open, let's change this and change that. And it seems like it needed to be changed. It's just, I'm just a little concerned, that's all, that you've got developer, local developers, like, actually writing public policy.
I wouldn't characterize it that way.
Well, I mean, this is policy, right?
Right, but, but staff is recommending it because we agree that it is consistent with standards in law.
Okay, I, I agree. I'm not, I'm just saying, it's just the, you know, like, I mean, were there any commissioners other than the chair? Chair said he answered some questions regarding some of these things.
No, in fact, everybody you saw the last time, May thirteenth, who came up and spoke, I think maybe one didn't speak, it was Bruce Grove.
Sure.
They were there, and so it was working with them.
And then, and when you developed, like, when was the workshop?
I would say it was probably three weeks after that planning commission hearing. I don't have the exact date.
Okay, and is that just common practice?
Well, in fact, the subdivision ordinance directs staff to work with the development community on the standard conditions.
Okay.
So.
And do you, do you work with the same developers or do you spread the wealth, you ask other developers to come in?
I think it was a completely different contingent of developers when we did this in 2010.
Okay. Just trying to educate, because I know people like, pay attention to this stuff. I mean, I think you wanted to say something. I thought, Commissioner, I thought you were saying something, making a comment or something like that. Okay, just trying to understand the transparency of this and making sure that, you know.
Yeah, I mean, we sent it to some additional developers and consultants, didn't hear anything.
Okay.
Also asked that the developers who were on the email chain share it. But beyond that, that's, that's the extent of the workshop.
Okay, okay, great. And then, yeah, I just had one on number thirty. Can we go to that one real quick, please? So it says, in the event, and I'm just going to the checklist one right here. So it says, in the event of any confusion, conflict, vagueness, typographical error, special circumstance where implementation of any standard or project-specific condition is in question, Development Services Director has the authority in accordance with that section to determine the appropriate remedy as necessary to ensure that the intent of the condition. So can you just, I mean, I've read it, but I'd just like to hear your explanation of that. Like, confusion, conflict, vagueness, there's just a lot of power in that one box for, like, a giant plan.
Yeah, I mean, I, I think that you could find that over the years, developers want to argue over what something means, what something says, and we do our best to make sure that these standard conditions are from, you know, either the exact language of the code or interpreting in a way that makes it make sense for somebody reading it. Other than that, if there's a discrepancy, it does give deference to the director.
So is there any checks and balances with that? Are there any, like, what does that look like?
I guess it would look like what this commission feels comfortable with that language saying.
I mean, is the city attorney review, is there, you know? It's just very vague. I mean, it's, it actually says vagueness in there. So it's just one person has, like, complete power to just make a decision based off of any of that. I'm sorry?
That's how it works.
If I may, I can just, I can let you know, I, this is basically every day of our, our jobs, right, where these conditions, we, the standard conditions or project-specific conditions, you always wish you could go back and write the condition a time or two, right? Because we write the condition as best as we can, but when we put pen to paper and a project applicant comes in and starts developing their grading plans, their site plans, their building plans, a lot of times, we have to revisit that condition and we generally do have some debate on what did this condition actually mean and how is this supposed to be interpreted? So there has to be someone to make that call. Now, the code, the subdivision ordinance, as well as our zoning ordinance, if there's a disagreement in an interpretation of that code, there is checks and balances, there also is the ability to appeal and bring it back to the Board of Administrative Review or back to this body. And so maybe I'd like to think I have a lot of power, but generally, I really don't. There's bodies above me where that appeal process can happen. So it's just meant to say, well, someone has to make the call, the first call, if there's a disagreement later on after the project's entitled and now we're starting to put plans together, someone's got to make the determination at staff level.
Yeah, and I heard some, I heard some comments from other commissioners, that's just how it's done. But have you ever seen litigation come out of that based off a decision that you've made or somebody else's made that then costs the city money? Because there is, you know, they don't, they don't agree with it and there's a lot of money at stake here. I mean, tens of millions of dollars.
In my time at the city, I haven't, I haven't seen that. Certainly it can happen. I mean, certainly people will threaten litigation.
Sure.
But, but generally, no, we revisit conditions upon, I mean, this happens all the time because it's easy for a condition of approval to go through. And then when it actually comes down to developing plans and getting budgets and costs start coming into play, you're wrestling with trying to figure out what does that condition actually mean and what do I have to do to satisfy that condition? So that's just a daily interpretation we do every day.
So I do feel more comfortable. I mean, I appreciate the explanation instead of just assuming things. But I do like it that, you know, I guess this would go to the Board of Appeals, that's what you're talking about. And if you weren't able to decide, like, you decide something and they're like, well, this doesn't work. So the next step is the Board of Appeals.
Yeah, the zoning code.
If that was written in here, that might feel a little better, like, what's the remedy?
It is standard too in the zoning code. Our zoning code under the administration chapter gives delineation of powers and talks about the director is sort of the first stop of making the call. And then also spells out very clearly in our zoning code, if the applicant does not agree, they have the ability to then progress all the way to ultimately City Council if they would like to.
Okay. So maybe, maybe even referencing that in here, it's just, maybe that feels a little better. Because that, what you just talked about is somewhere else.
And if I can further clarify for that as well, they can't file a lawsuit until they exhaust all of their administrative remedies first.
Sure.
So they have to go through that entire process before a lawsuit could be filed.
Yeah. So even just referencing what you just said in this-
If I may attempt to clarify.
Yeah.
What, this is one of those things that is true throughout this entire document. The majority of these items are a paraphrased version of what's already in the city ordinance.
Sure.
And so I'd put it this way, this, this condition could be struck in its entirety, I'm not proposing that, and the procedures that the director described would still apply. So there's no, there's no teeth nor-
There's a lot of teeth in this right here. There's giant teeth. And the process that he's already talking about is, I like that.
Let me, let me back up. The law, which is ordinance.
Sure.
Already says this is required, and this is attempting to summarize it to give staff and developers a checklist on it.
But everything they said, all the other remedies are not in this right here. Like, does that make sense? Like, all the other process that you're talking about, if there is a conflict, it's not right here. It's not.
No, there are, there are dozens and perhaps hundreds.
I understand that, but it's just not, I'm just reading what's on paper right here. And so you're not referring to the other, the other ordinances, even if you reference that.
Which, which was, in fact, one of my recommendations that they chose not to follow, for good reason, probably, was, 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 don't say it if it's already somewhere else.
Don't say it, yeah.
But, but in this case, we have, we have the most common things that come up that are conversation items day in, day out on projects and staff have attempted to say, okay, here's, here's kind of a checklist. But I would also say this, this particular item and the majority of these items don't compel anything beyond what's already in law with ordinance being city law.
Yeah, so if I could just point out.
Legislative.
Condition thirty-three did say that in terms of fees, and there's a process for appeal for development impact fees. And the consultants and development community said, that's already in chapter sixteen twenty, that language is not necessary, recommended removing it. And that's what we're recommending is on this slide here. So I guess you can go either way with it, but I'm just giving you some context of what was recommended by the workshop folks.
Okay, I understand there's remedies, what you're talking about. It's just when I, when I read that, it just seemed like a lot of power for one person. And, you know, we're built on checks and balances and, you know, what are the remedies? And I'm here, there are remedies and like that, but it's just not here, it's not even referenced, you know?
So I'll, I'll jump in real quick, Commissioner, just to correct myself a little bit here. So we were looking up the Reading Municipal Code seventeen oh four eighty, and that is referenced there, you can see in conditions, under condition thirty. And so just revisiting that, I want to clarify in this case, actually, that's, it's a verbatim language from that Reading Municipal Code section.
Okay.
And then the appeal, and this actually goes, says administrative determinations by the director shall be documented in writing, so on and so forth, and appealed actually to an appeals board. And so that's handled through, this would be subdivision ordinance. So this might not actually go to BAR or to PC, but there's an appeals board the code requires us to establish. So that, that is all codified in the municipal code.
Sure.
So we've, it's always a balancing act. We've regurgitated some of the code and cited the code reference, but we didn't give you all the RMC because that's elsewhere, right? So it's, it's a balancing act, but it is codified and is that reference section there, seventeen, what is it, forty, eighty, has further detail, if that's helpful, just adding that as some context.
Okay. It's still, it's still confusing. You could say it all day long and you're pointing all these different things.
Yeah, I mean, our code-
And I think, I think the intent of that was to make it less confusing, but, you know. Yeah. I mean, I don't know. I'm just not comfortable with it. You can keep trying to explain it. I hear commentary over here, you know, which is, makes me uncomfortable, because I'm just trying, I'm just trying to get clarification about what's, what I'm reading here. And, you know, usually things are referenced to somewhere else and whatever. So, I mean, you're just, I, I look at it through the lens of a developer from outside of Reading, that's not part of, you know, the local community, comes here and wants to build something. And they look at this and they're like, you know, this is what they do. And they go, what is that? And, and at least they say, oh, that references, at least there's a, there's an appeal process, there's something that just allows, allows us to, you know, continue what we're doing here.
Right. Yeah, and that's-
I mean, it's in a box. It says it right there. You have all the power to do this.
But it also references Municipal Code seventeen oh four eighty.
Yes.
So that developer likely would have an attorney.
Yes.
And their attorney would go, I'm going to go look at that code.
Right.
And then they read it and they tell the developer, actually, if you don't agree with Jeremy, you can go appeal this.
You can do these other things.
Right, you know, I mean, that's sort of day in, day out, that's how it does work.
But I hear you. I mean, we can't verbatim regurgitate all the code in the standard conditions, it would be, you know, thousands of pages long.
Yeah, yeah.
But I, for what it's worth, I do feel comfortable that the condition references our specific municipal code, and you go there, and it's all spelled out in very, very good detail.
Okay.
For what it's worth.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. I think we have not heard from Commissioner Ryan. Did you have any comments that have not been discussed already?
I just wanted to say that the improvements on the cultural resources thing are awesome. Because it was crazy vague, and I just, I see it in other places where that is just all kinds of bad news, and this is much tighter, and doesn't lead to all kinds of bad news. So anyway, I thought it was super well done. I went and looked at the resource code on that, and the one thing that was really helpful is it tightens down who gets to be a tribe. It isn't, because the way it read before, it was kind of like anyone could assert authority and hold the whole thing up, so much better, I think everyone will live happily ever after. I predict happily ever after.
Very good. Thank you. And circling back over here, because we still have a public hearing opportunity. Commissioner Balcovic, Commissioner Willam. Okay, I'm good also then. What I'd like to do is thank staff, and then I would like to open the public hearing, and I do not have any blue cards. If anyone wishes to speak, please speak now or forever. Bring it back again. I'm not sure we have a hold your peace clause in this meeting. Thank you. I now close the public hearing. With that, I will bring it back to commission for any other comments, or are you ready to entertain a motion recognizing that it, staff's recommendation is, everything we have in final black and white, as amended by the screen on number nine. Is that correct? Did I get the number right this time? Thank you. Any further comments? No, I will-
I think he wants to make the motion with the change that he should go first, but if you don't, then we can't.
Well, I don't know, is it any more, I mean, I guess I feel more comfortable after the explanation of that.
That was good facilitation. Thank you.
So I appreciate your patience, that's what we're here to do. And we just wanted to make sure that we have good checks and balances. Like I said, my only concerns were, where are you getting these developers from? Seems like they have a lot of influence with policy. And, you know, just make sure we spread the wealth and we include other developers instead of the ones that are, you know.
Yeah.
You know, maybe spread that out, or, I don't know, advertise it, or just make it more fair. Because if I was a developer, and I'm like, well, I'd like to say something. I'd like to, I'd like to have, you know, I'd like to be able to get in front of you and tell you what I think.
Yeah.
It just, it becomes a little cloudy, a little murky, just looking for more transparency, that's all.
Yeah, no, I can appreciate that. You know, we do talk to developers day in and out, day in and day out, out-of-towners and folks that are here, you know, it's just part of our job. And I will say, in the five years of doing this here at the city, that, you know, like, to David's point, we did offer the extension to other folks. We know, we know pretty much all the players in town. Some showed up, some didn't. I've had workshops to talk through building codes, we have workshops all the time to talk through and get public input, and the reality is, the developers are stakeholders in this process, just like other property owners and other folks in the process too.
Yeah, yeah.
But as you know, and I know you've worked in municipal government too, you can offer that up, and generally, not too many take you up on it, you know? So we do our best to outreach and get that input, and we'll continue to-
That's good to hear. That's all I'm asking for, is we just spread the wealth, we just, you know, make sure everyone, they choose to show up or not, or whatever, at least everybody's kind of invited.
Yeah, oh, yeah.
You know?
Yeah, we extended the umbrella, and, you know, I appreciate David's, you know, quick work to, at the direction of this body, put that workshop together. Everyone that showed up to that public hearing was invited, and then some. So I think, given the time constraints we had in trying to turn around quickly, we did about as good a job as we could have, so I want to thank David for his time.
That's great.
And also the input of the developers that were involved. I wasn't a part of the workshop myself, but I heard it was really constructive and appreciate everyone's time, so, yeah.
Okay, great, thank you.
So with that, I will make a motion to approve subdivision application S-2022-02416, and rezoning application, RZ-2024-0015. Oh, wait, that's not it. Hand me yours.
What I normally do is say, move staff recommendation with this modification.
Okay, so I moved to approve staff's recommendation with the addition that we didn't receive on item nine for approval.
Thank you. Is there a second?
A second.
We have a second, and the piece we didn't receive, but for the notes, we saw it on the board, and it was explained orally. So we have a motion and second, any further discussion before we call for a vote? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed? Thank you. Motion carries. Thank you very much, and really thank you very much to staff, because that, this was one of those, in all of your spare time, go back and do a whole lot of extra work, and